Spend some of that unreserved fund balance and bring us down closer to the 8%. It seems like maybe a good option to do that. 2.95 feels high, particularly after last year was 1.5. So I'm probably about 1.5 again? I don't know exactly, but somewhere in between 1 and 2. If you might sort of gut reaction after what we've heard today, but I might have to think about that.
Ms. Powell Ford.
I think I have some similar thoughts. Seems like we don't need to go to that, you know, the full 2.95. We have some room, but it definitely seems like we need some caution for the future. It's not just about this year and the decision that we make this year. So I would probably tend to be, again, somewhere between that, that 1 and 2. Probably also, to Mr. Janbrow's point, like to have the Audit Committee, if possible, give us a little bit more pointed direction on that.
Ms. Powell.
Yeah, you know, we've talked a lot about this in audit, and we're probably looking at somewhere closer to option 3, option 2, when we look at, we put how much into a capital reserve this last year?
200,000.
200,000. That's 200,000 that we've already put into the capital reserve, and we're still, we're still on a break-even type of a bout. So I think that we can get away with still having strong finances with a 0% increase. We do not need to, again, we're going to look at where the 2018-19 year comes in before we even think about funding this upcoming capital reserve, if the voters agree to it, okay? So I'm leaving that off the table until we know what's going to happen with this fiscal year. And if we do not, if the voters do not agree to that fund, we're still going to have a pretty strong unreserved fund balance.
Yeah. Okay, so...
That we have to address.
Yeah. It's, I think it's difficult because we're missing two board members, you know, both of them sit on the Audit Committee. And I think Mr. Hawke's been, you know, very, very much committed to what you're talking about, Mr. Aldridge, you know, he took, you know, option 2, option 3, probably he said option 3, if I understand what I've heard him say. So he said option 3. I don't know, you know, again, you know, it's difficult because Mr. Forster's not here, so, you know, and I can't even characterize anything relative to him. I don't know how his feeling is. So, but I think direction-wise, then, I guess what I'm thinking is that if we were, so, I'm just thinking aloud, I'm just imagining what might come. If we, if we had half a percent, I apologize, half a percent to 1.5%, you know, that, if a consensus develops around 0, you know, then we only need to get down half, you know? And if, you know, and if, you know, we're at 1.5%, we've got that on the board, you know? So is that feasible? I mean, just to, you know, give us...
Well, roughly about 80,000 is a half a percent. And so, you know, if you turn it to a levy of 0.5% and tax rate's going to be somewhere around 65 cents, and you'd be cutting somewhere in that $400,000 range, and likewise, if you went up to 1.5%, you'd be somewhere around $1.70, roughly 240, 250 in a cut.
So let me ask this question, because maybe this would help. Okay, so what's been thrown out is that, you know, what we do to get any change to this is we use unrestricted, unappropriated fund balance, we cut expenses, and so just to get kind of a flash out then, you know, do people feel like, well, look, you know, whatever we might do, what the Board would want to do is not so much cut expenses at this point, but use unappropriated fund balance. Is that a thought? So that essentially what you're confronting is, okay, well, we're worried about the expense side, you know, we like the budget relative to programs that we're funding and the changes that we're making and so on. So it's not an expense-side thing, it's just a use possibly of additional unappropriated fund balance, so that...
Look, if you're up here, we actually had this conversation today, Mr. Certisio and I, and no matter where you are in the process and the way that I do it, if you were to say right now, take it down 100,000, the first thing I'm not going to do is to go in and say, I'm taking that program out of there. I'm not, I'm not going to do that. I'm going to go in and take a look at everything again and say, okay, do I have something here that I'm carrying that today I found out I don't need? So I'm taking out an expense without affecting anything. That we do that first. Obviously, the state budget's a factor, so we'll be looking at that, too. So you're really not going to be in a position instantly where you say, 400,000 on fund balance. You're going to massage it a little bit, maybe I'll look at it a little too many times, but... There's, kind of left to the madness, it's not, it's not a pure program cuts.
Which is great, and I think that helps all of us then relative to how we would think about this, because we may actually have state, a state budget, which will be helpful and would allow us to massage this.
Right, and there's two other factors here that I have to make you aware of as a Board. One, 2018-19 was created in the manner in which I've created previous budgets, so things are going through in that fashion. 1920, we're going back in and making lesser projections, carrying less, so that over time, where you're applying a million, that's going to come down, too. It might be 600 or 700,000, then that's what you're carrying in the process. So much like you're not going to have a fund balance where you're going to go straight up in one year in most years, you're not going to also want to bring down that thing. So we're kind of at the peak, you know, we're going to work it down over a period of time, taking into account things that the Audit Committee has asked for, taking into account carrying less on each line item, maybe looking harder at a five or six-year actual history and basically a little tighter on that. Not something that will be purely based on 0, but something that will be based on a little tighter look at everything. And so that way, you're not going to put the district in jeopardy in one year by going crazy, so.
Yeah, no one likes crazy. Okay. How's everyone feel? Brian? Mr. Aldridge?
I think, Brian is fine. I had, I've got a good memory of, of the previous budgets that we've had put together here. And if you ever, if you remember the past four or five years that I've been on the Board, you come out with a budget and you're like, oh, holy cow, you know, we're going to have to increase taxes 5%, right? That was your, that's always your first projection, right?
Usually.
A little higher.
95%.
And every successive budget that he, he puts out over the next four, five, six weeks, it keeps coming down and coming down. And then finally, your last one is, it magically appears to be the tax cap.
It's not magic.
I know it's not.
It's what John is charged for. But anyway, go ahead.
Again, so I think that what he's saying is, is that, well, what I interpret him is to say is, there's a difference between budget and actual. And we can have a plan for whatever we want, I've discussed this before, we can have a plan for whatever we want, but until the administration changes how they want to spend that money, the budget is just a plan. But the way you spend the money is what actually gets done. So you can, you can have a plan, and you're right, you're not going to go in and wipe out a program in your budget to get down to a certain level. You're going to, you're going to go against the fund balance, and you're going to keep programming the same, and that's actual. So I think we do go against the unreserved to get to the 0% option. I'm going to say option 3, option 2.75. You want to go 2.75?
No, option 2.75.
Option 2.75.
Just checking you, Mr. Aldridge.
So that's between option 2 and option 3.
Just checking.
But, but the actual way the district is being run isn't really the budget, it's administration, until we change their philosophy. And I'm not saying that we should.
I mean, I think we're driving it, though, so, I mean, I'd be concerned about getting into a discussion about that. I mean, I think that, you know, what we're funding is all the things that we think are important for our district.
But again, the first thing that happens when we, when we cut the budget is we cut reserves, you don't cut programs.
Right, that's what I was talking about.
And I think what, to clarify what Mr. Forbes said, is we have to move it forward, not, not programs, we're using a scalpel to trim our expected expenses. So let's, the Board is demonstrating support for some of the program presentations that we've had here, so how can we put forth a budget where we can, where we can move those programs forward for the good of our students, with the overall agreement about, but also reduce our overall expenditures? And I'm, you know, there probably are some areas that we can reduce a little bit here and there, right? Ms. Ford?
Yes, there are.
No comment, that's fine.
With the combination...
We're in a combination of unreserved reserves.
Fuel and electric.
It's a two, it's a two-headed coin, man.
Yeah, I mean, because we're talking about MTSS, we're talking about the changes to the middle school, the changes to the middle school, you know, you hear them talk about this is a four, five-year process, the MTSS, this is a huge process. I mean, got to get into the, you know, through the middle school and into the high school, and, you know, it's really significant, and we made that commitment to, anyway, I mean, we, so Ms. Powell Ford, now you're thinking.
I think, you know, how we, how we preserve the programs, you know, if that is, we have the funds to back into that, with that, you know, get to that option 3-ish. I guess I still have concerns about going to that 0%, 0% this year, we can afford it this year, we, you know, can see how we have a path forward this year, but really understanding what the impact of that 0% does for subsequent years, I guess, I would just like to have some really playing out that scenario. What does that potentially look like, where we can get to next year if we were to need to get there? So I think I would just need a little bit more understanding about that.
I think what I'm hearing, what I can do is to get to the Board relatively quickly, examples in that option 2, option 3 range, to show you what the effect is on the taxes. We can also take a look at a quick projection using the past tax caps, kind of show you what they were and what the amount of levy increase would be now, based upon your current levy, and that would probably be what we're looking for, I would think.
Thank you.
And then you could have, go have that tomorrow, that's relatively easy to put together, so.
Right.
Yeah, Ms. Kay, can you share?
I'm, I'm, so...
Yeah, you're good. Mr. Janbrow.
Well, twice?
Yeah, yeah, I want to make sure, I guess it's paramount, we're in the business of
education, so whatever decisions we make and how we make them, we want to make sure that our programming and our educational, what we've had going, to continue going because it's been very positive. On the other hand, I don't feel, and some, and this is, a couple of years ago, remember, I went over, 1%.
I do remember. That's what I was talking about.
And, well, anyways, I don't, I guess, I'm not quite sure how this may be, but I don't feel that I'm allowed to ask people for additional monies that we don't need to place them in reserves and to stash them here, because someday we might need them. And so that's where I'm focused. Okay, but number one, like I said, it's paramount, because we're in the business of education, maintain our, our programming and increase programming where we need to, and make sure that that's never affected by monies or cuts. And then the other one is just kind of, I'm not too sure that we should go to 2.95, if there's monies we don't need to place in unreserved, I think our period of use is older and everything, I'll have to speak to them, that...
We're all getting old, so.
We could, you know, it could be utilized, if we don't need it for programs.
Mr. Certisio, are you good with this?
Yeah, I mean, I'm hearing a consensus that the 2.95 tax cap levy is too high, we need to look at something significantly below that, draw the reasons stated, and I certainly can support that. I commend the Board for being focused on programs that are going to enhance our students' experience here, but at the same time, being fiscally responsible for our taxpayers. So I'll look forward to reviewing what Mr. Forbes puts together for us. I do have a question, Mr. Forbes, what is our obligation at our next meeting in terms of presenting the budget form?
You would need to approve whatever you're going to put on the ballot for total, which would include specifics for your capital allocation for next time. And if you didn't do that, you then would have to have a meeting at some point prior to April 29th to do that, so.
So worst-case scenario is the April 19th meeting, which is, you know, special meeting, could include that, but not everyone can attend that, so, you know, so hopeful.
And kind of the discussion that Mr. Certisio and I have had is, right along, is focusing on having it to the point that you're ready to go and go down it for the next meeting, so. If we can get an idea of what that number will be, then we'll have that available. If you wanted to go that night and make adjustments on the fly, we could have things kind of lined up, but that's going to require you to take a determined, sometimes to get, you know, run through, but that's a possibility as well.
And the hope is that we have an on-time budget.
Right, I mean, that's obviously a big factor. If they were to give us $150,000, that...
Yeah, that makes things easier. Cool.
Would it be possible to have an Audit Committee meeting with just the ones that we're able to attend, two out of the three? And something, yes, and input?
Well, so, currently, we're scheduled for Friday the 15th.
But you said not everybody can make it. So even though you have two, you're still counting on having...
That, the purpose of that meeting was to meet with the internal auditors to go over their risk assessment report?
Yeah. And discussion.
I hear those, so I...
Any meetings just go on.
Must come to a bit a little more like...
I, I can give you a recap and tell you what's going to happen.
Maybe if they had special meeting at 7:00 in the morning, on the 16th, you can bring us all up to date.
What do you think?
Okay, that's great. Mr. Certisio, are you good then? Let's move on to something we can really sink our teeth into, how about their calendar?
I don't have, I don't have enough for all of the folks. You don't have a color copy?
Well, I do, sir. I got my color.
So anyway, what we have before you is a draft of the 2019, 2020, early summer school district instructional calendar. I want to thank the members of the management team, Ms. Heminger, Mr. Essex, Mr. Pecos, Ms. Farrell, Mr. Rada, and also Ms. Slavel for their work and input in developing this calendar. We looked at a number of different iterations of this calendar, really based on what that group showed were the important things in this district. This does stray a bit from the BOSI's regional calendar in a few areas. For example, the BOSI's regional calendar, October 11th is a recess day, May 22nd is a recess day, and then in February, the 19th, 20th, and 21st are recess days. So it's five days that the BOSI's regional calendar is recessed, and the difference for us is January 27th is an in-service day for Cordonia, which is not on the regional calendar, and April 6th through 9th are recess days, where those are days in session for the BOSI's regional calendar. The nuances here in what's presented to you, the light green areas, are the testing windows for the state tests, and the 24th of March through the 31st is ELA.
Is that correct, Mr. Rada?
Yeah. And if the Board does adopt this calendar, it's going to require us to be a little bit creative in how we go about scoring, and that was really a big issue we had to overcome because the regional scoring plan is for the 6th, 7th, and 8th of April. So Mr. Rada, in his years of wisdom and utter brilliance, has really worked out a plan to make sure we continue to regional score as best we can, but probably with a combination of some now scoring as well.
Mr. Janbrow.
All right. There's nothing more that I'd probably say about this, I've spoken to this for many years, probably people have heard of it. So I guess the only thing I'd like to say is, can we dispense with the second review?
No.
I don't know.
No, I'm kidding. No, I thought about it, yeah.
The only thing I want to point out, too, is the way the calendar falls and how major regions exams are, it has allowed us to move our staff development days from August to September, and the first due day would be September 5th. It's a little bit later than the previous calendar.
I have an idea what Certisio will say, just to clarify something, it's not been my intent to have the calendar reflect vacation days, that's totally not it. What I've always looked at in comparing with the BOSI's calendar, which they don't like to be called the BOSI's calendar, it's a regional calendar. It's a regional, that's correct, I've known that many times, is that I'm concerned with, and try to address seat time, and what I'm really concerned with is uninterrupted seat time, because if you look at, let's say, the BOSI's calendar, which we don't have here, but if it's broken up, the reg, skirt, I did it once, and I can't, I want to see Mr. Orford, and I can't believe it's me. So I'm really concerned with uninterrupted seat time, and if you look at this, you have some blocks of time where we might have a day or maybe two without class, but then we've got a good block of time where, you know, like a lot of instructors, so, that's always been my intent with this, not concerned with vacations, I don't care about vacations, but it's immaterial to me, but I think it helps, in my opinion, the educational process for children.
Cool. Any other thoughts, any other board members, or...
You've got a two-week break in April, sorry, but then you've got ELA and math testing when the kids get right back, and I, I'm sorry, I just, I don't know what our principals think of that, but...
Well, that's come up prior.
But, but I see that as a huge, huge disadvantage to kids coming back when they've been off for two weeks. You know, I know I was, I was not an exceptional student, but I couldn't remember where my locker was when I came back from a two-week break.
Well, this has come up in the past, and it's always been an argument, and it's a valid argument. However, I don't believe the, what they are testing, you know, like some people will want to prepare them for the test. I don't know if that's really the case, that you would be preparing for these tests, and it's basically a test of already knowledge that they have, that they have developed or gained. So, I mean, there's two sides of that. Now, so, you know, we're busy, I have my own feelings on it, and I don't know, some teachers would debate me on this, and they have, you know, but I feel that it's, it's good, because February, you got that, that very break, you know, big time, where you have seat time. March, you got seat time, and do it again. And when you come back and you have those state testing, then you have all of May and June going into regions. Now, those are the tests, I think, that you need teachers at the be coven, so, and make sure they're working with their students, so they're prepared to take. The state tests, you only know what they're on there, and sometimes you don't get them back for the X number of months, so I don't know. We're worried about testing, getting ready to practice for that particular test, but it's, it's a valid point.
Any other thoughts? Ms. Powell Ford, anything?
When I first saw it, when I, I had some more thoughts, Mr. Aldridge, around coming back to the, to the, to the state tests, and I think there's some, some about the content, but there's also just being in the frame of mind, right? That first day back from being a two-week break, whether or not it's material, I have been taught to, am I prepared to sit down and just really get into that? So definitely have questions about that. I think one of the other things that, you know, I know it's a smaller group of our students, but those AP exams that are in the first couple of weeks of May, these late breaks, I think, can be difficult for those AP students that are preparing and coming into those, you know, coming back. I think this year, they, you know, have eight or nine days, I think, before they come back to having some of those AP exams this year. So it's, it's not a perfect schedule for, for everyone, I appreciate that, but the two weeks is, I kind of waver on that.
So, one second. Mr. Rada, the, the testing in April, the 20th to the 27th, is that a window?
It's a window.
That's a window. So you can pass later in the week.
We have two days of that week, we actually give the after test.
Okay, so that's helpful.
Okay, so we put the whole window in there, just, just...
So we know what that would do as.
And the other part, too, with this calendar, the days in red are holidays, so if you're only focused on equal at this point, the 10th would be Good Friday, the 13th would be Eastern Monday, and the 14th through 17th would match the regional calendar. So the real days in question here, in terms of the conversation, are the 6th through the 9th.
Right.
Just making sure.
Ms. Kay?
No, and then, Mr. Rada?
I'm sorry, you said that the days in question are the 6th through, why not the 14th through the 17th?
If we were to match to the regional.
I see.
But we're not matching to the regional, so we wouldn't have to match for that.
You wouldn't have to? Okay.
Okay, thank you. And then, Mr. Rada and Mr. Certisio, March 20th is that the combined, you're hoping for another combined development day?
That day is a day that if districts do choose to go for the regional calendar, that would be an opportunity to do a collaboration on that.
Cool, that's great. Yeah, because I know that it was, folks were really excited about that, it worked well, and you were excited, and especially...
Great, okay, so we could have a second reading of this then at our next Board meeting, and sort of do the budget, and, hey, that's great, then, at the next meeting.
Okay, we'll think about it. At our agenda meeting. Okay, so then, boards reserve this time to hear comments from the audience. Those wishing to address the board are asked to stand, give their name and address. Limit their comments to five minutes or less per individual or group. Audience members seeking a response should complete a board correspondence sheet and return that, Ms. Slagle, if you wish to have a response. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board on any issue whatsoever? Yeah, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Alejandro Mares Wakefield, but that's an awful sign of my name, though. My address is 19 Wesley Street, and I wanted to ask about the ESL department and whether or not it's considered part of the special ed departments. Might just boil down to my ignorance on the subject or pride not to ask my father, but I wanted to ask about that, whether it's under the funding, accessibility, and consultant consultation of the special ed department. And if so, are ESL students held to the special ed standard or the general ed standards? Since the only primary barrier is the language difference between the ESL student and the subject that he or she is learning. Since the ESL student's potential can go to AP standards, for instance, but the difficulty of learning a completely new language can impair them, is there, other than relying on a consultant to deal with this individual student when the consultant has to deal with new, with other, and now more, the ever-growing ESL student population? Is there any other way of helping said student go further in the subject that they wish to go through without having to rely on that consultant? And if there is, is it funded under the special ed bracket? Thank you.
Thanks so much. So what we'll do is, yeah, we're going to have Ms. Farrell and maybe Mr. Pashdin could address that. That might be the best thing to do. There were a lot of parts to that question, and it would take a good bit of time, I would think, for anyone to respond to it. So if you could wait till after the meeting, and we're almost there, so it'd be great. Anyone else wish to address the board on any issue whatsoever? If not, then I would close that. And so that takes us to announcements. First off, I just want to thank everyone for being here. I really appreciate that. Also, the government students, you, like, really lucked out. We usually don't go this long, you know? So you got, like, you get, like, extra credit, I think, you know, maybe, I don't know. It's probably, it's probably, you know, too much, like, micromanagement, you deserve it. Thanks so much. Then there will be a community budget forum, and that's going to be April 9th at 6:00 PM in the high school library, well, right here. It's going to precede our regular meeting. And it is an opportunity for folks to talk to the board about, you know, what they want relative to programming and assuring, assurances, what have you, for what this district does should do and could do. So we would welcome people to come to that meeting if you wish to address the board relative to budget issues, also taxes. So we certainly would welcome anyone with respect to that and comments respecting our budget and so on. Then the BOSI's annual meeting will be Tuesday, April 9th, at the BOSI's Carrier Educational Center in Angola. That begins at 7:30. Annual meeting, social hours, hour, excuse me, will be held from 6:00 to 7:30 in the same location. Board members plan to attend, and of course, that's our budget forum, our meeting of the board. Board members plan to attend should note by, Ms. Slagle, by Thursday, March 28th. And of course, our regular meeting of the board is going to immediately follow the budget forum. So once the budget forum concludes, we'll just be moving right into our regular meeting. Then there is a special meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for April 16 at 7:30 in the morning in the district office, and that's for the purpose of voting on the 2019-2020 BOSI's administrative budget and cast the board's ballot in the election of members to serve on the BOSI's Board of Education. As such, that's going to be the only, the only thing that we're going to be dealing with that morning. We only need a quorum. It's relatively pro forma, just so everyone's aware. And so we need four people to be able to attend, and it usually takes 10 or 15 minutes. And so I hope to be able to get that done. Then.
You will take attendance before the meeting, make sure you've got it formed?
Yeah, we have to.
I'm, because I know I will not be able to make that meeting.
Oh, okay. Yeah, and. Okay, so we're, we don't know where these other two folks are. Maybe have one out of two there, Ms. Gagel, so, Mr. Chamberlain.
Yeah, well, I guess I probably better meet them.
Maybe we'll do the second reading at 10:00, at that meeting, you know?
And I better bring some tissues.
And, and I've read. Okay. Yeah. Okay.